Welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, March 5th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. If you'd please silence your phones. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by Pastor Gary Fuller from Avery Presbyterian Church at 1910 Avery Road East. Please stand. On behalf of our city and in the name of Jesus Christ, your son and my Savior, I ask all these things in his name. First, I thank you for the privilege of living in Bellevue, and I pray that all citizens will work for the peace and prosperity of our city. That includes being loyal to local businesses. I pray for the welfare of Bellevue as its welfare will determine the welfare of all citizens. Lord, I pray for our military, for a hedge of protection, as well as our police, firefighters, first responders, and all who risk their lives to protect others. May they all have the skills and cool-headedness to do their jobs effectively and safely. I pray for the spiritual welfare of our city. Protect us from the evil and violence that plague some cities. May there be a movement of your Holy Spirit that results in peace, harmony, love for each other. We know that you delight in justice, so we pray that justice is always done for everyone. May we draw close to you so that you will draw close to us. Let us be known as a just, caring, and kind community. I pray that you give our mayor, the city council, and all city officials the wisdom, energy, and integrity needed to govern and lead effectively and efficiently. May all citizens be blessed with wisdom so that we may choose wise leaders. We pray that everything that is thought, said, done tonight benefits our city and pleases you. Amen. Thank you Pastor Fuller. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Present.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Yes, Mayor. I'll move to approve and then I'll make an amendment.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, second by Welch. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remove from the agenda. This would be an amendment. I'll move to withdraw item sixteen G, which is the Cox Cable Agreement. And I do so because I think we can negotiate, hopeful we can negotiate a better deal, and maybe our good negotiator Harrison Johnson might even do some looking, but it'll give us a couple of weeks to see what we can do. That's an explanation and a motion to pull it.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, second by Welch to remove item sixteen G from consent, right?
No.
Oh, current.
From the regular agenda.
Just regular agenda. Sorry. Okay, please vote.
I'm gonna do a verbal roll call. Councilman Casey.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman McCaw.
Yes.
Councilman Preister.
Yes.
And Councilman Burns.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we have a motion by Preister, second by Welch to approve the agenda. Now it's amended, removing sixteen G. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Councilman Casey.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman McCaw.
Yes.
Councilman Preister.
Yes.
Councilman Burns.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Councilman Casey.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman McCaw.
Yes.
Councilman Preister.
Yes.
Councilman Burns.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, we have no special presentations this evening. Item eight, organizational matters, we have none this evening. Item nine, approved citizen communication, we have two. First one will be nine A, Patrice Beckham, thoughts and observations regarding administrative process and council rules. And if you would just step up to the podium, announce your name and address, and sign in, and we'll have five minutes for each person this evening to speak, so please stay within that timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Patrice Beckham. I live at 13601 South Eighteenth Street here in Bellevue, Nebraska. I appreciate the time to speak to you tonight. At the council meeting on February 6th, 2024, the rule regarding, requiring three readings was suspended twice, so the public hearing could be held on two ordinances and the council could vote after the public hearing. First, the rules were suspended for ordinance forty-one forty-nine, which authorized general obligation bonds of up to twelve point five million dollars to finance the cost of water main improvements in the Highway thirty-four corridor. As I understand it, the city had a memorandum of understanding with M U D to pay for the cost of the water main extension. I understand that obligation and the need to issue bonds to pay that cost. What seemed odd to me is that this had to occur at the last minute, and to accommodate timely payment, the rules had to be suspended. It certainly seems like the city should have known that the twelve point five million dollars would be due, and should have been able to plan sufficiently to get the bonds issued within the three-reading rule. At that same meeting, the rules were again suspended for ordinance forty-one fifty, which authorized the issuance of bonds for the purchase of the land and construction of the Bellevue Water Park in an amount not to exceed sixty million dollars. I'm not here to debate whether the city should have proceeded with the water park. My issue is with the suspension of the three-reading rule, so you could hold the public hearing and council could vote on the ordinance at that meeting. This was a serious increase in the city's debt, almost doubling it, and yet it was added to the council agenda at the last minute, the morning of the meeting. I find it rather interesting that if I wish to speak to you as my elected officials, I have to ask for permission and give five days' advance notice, but an important item that significantly increased the city's debt was added to the agenda with less than twenty-four hours' notice. Adding ordinance forty-one fifty to the agenda the morning of the meeting was bad enough, but then you unanimously voted to suspend the three-reading rule, which resulted in fast-tracking the decision on that ordinance. Most citizens are busy just trying to make a living and raise their families. It's not reasonable to expect them to watch the agenda for every council meeting right up until the day of the meeting. In my humble opinion, this was inexcusable. The council came up with multiple reasons why they took such actions and why they felt it was justified. To me, none of them are acceptable because that process undermined the rights of the people, by the way, elected you, to have ample time to hear about the project, ask questions, receive answers, and provide their feedback. You are not spending your own money. You are spending the money taken from the citizens of Bellevue via taxes. At a minimum, we should have had an ample opportunity to speak up and have our voices heard. I found it very interesting that one of the reasons for fast-tracking the ordinance and suspending the rules was concern over the interest rates on the bonds. Yet, near the end of the discussion, it became clear that the bonds would be issued in phases, with something like five million issued in the near term. This raised a question in my mind, why the urgency to vote on this if the bulk of the bonds won't be issued until later? It sure seems like the project and the sixty million in debt could still have been accomplished and no real damage done if you had adhered to the three-reading rule. There were all sorts of excuses put out by the council, the mayor, and the city administrator, and to me, that's all they are. They're excuses. The rules exist for a reason, to provide the opportunity for citizens to be informed and to have their voices heard. That should not have been taken away from us. Just because you legally have the right to suspend the three-reading rule doesn't make it moral or ethical. We all know the phrase, actions have consequences. Well, your actions on February 6th did nothing to earn you the respect and trust of the citizens of Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. Think I'll have Jim just address a couple items on that as we go through the speakers here. So I know there's a competitive nature, but there's also on those bonds a reason that if we were to spend money in the first few weeks, we need to be able to reimburse ourselves in the future.
Correct. And Rich could probably explain that better, but the ability to reimburse yourself through the bonding process, I don't know if Rich, if you want to step up and speak to that specifically, but we needed the ability to be able to reimburse ourselves if we put an expense in, whether it was for some of the pre-work or the land purchase itself, that anything that went out, we needed to have that reimbursement. Do you want to, it's a little more trickier when it comes to that, but then also to lay in on the competitive nature that this particular project, as soon as it's announced, if we didn't take action, we, without divulging who that is, we had another site that this could have potentially went to. So it was to expedite the end and run, but.
Rich Seversen, Finance Director, you explained it pretty well right there. Getting the ordinance passed, then we can start the clock and we can reimburse ourselves for costs as they're incurred when we do bond.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you. Nine B, Kyle Roan, speaking regarding the budget, and same rules, please. Just announce your name, sign in, announce your address, and five minutes to speak, please.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for allowing me and giving me permission to speak. My name's Kyle Roan. I live at nineteen oh eight Madison Street here in Bellevue. In 2022, council took advantage of high valuations and had a public hearing at four thirty on a Friday afternoon, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. That week, there was a Sarpy County Public Hearing where citizens voiced overwhelming opposition to increase in property tax revenues that exceeded the threshold set by L B six forty-four. The council and this administration ignored their voices. In 2023, the council did the same thing, ignoring the voices of citizens requesting a thirteen point eight percent increase in property tax revenue, again exceeding the threshold set by L B six four four. In 2023, the Bellevue City Council did the following, again ignoring the opposition of its citizens. They increased city spending by forty-two percent. And I want to repeat that, forty-two percent. Your city council increased spending of your tax money by forty-two percent. On February 6th of this year, only hours of public notice were given to two bond issues that were seventy-two point five million dollars. This added to our debt to make a total of thirty, one hundred and thirty-nine point five million dollars. And I understand that all those bonds weren't issued, but they can be at some times. So given the debt of that night that we had and the debt that was added, my addition is one hundred and thirty-nine point five million. With forecasted revenues of a hundred and sixty million, our debt-to-revenue ratio is eighty-seven percent. On February 6th of 2024, the council voted unanimously to also add a point five percent sales tax to anything that was purchased within Bellevue. That was supposed, or that is funded or earmarked to fund the sixty million dollar water park, when everything that we were told in that short amount of time was that the water park was so awesome that it was going to pay for itself. On February twentieth of 2024, the council voted to not allow citizens on the budget task force. Mr. Preister, you said that citizens were not able to understand the complexities of public budgeting. Now, that's paraphrased, but yes, go back and look at the video. But yes, that's the way that I took it. And by the way, I've got a master's degree in public administration. The people that were also in the audience are actuaries, and they have master's degree in mathematics. So I think we are capable of understanding if it will only be explained to us, and that's all I'm asking. Currently, on the financial status that was submitted to, submitted to the administration February twenty-seventh, our expenditures have outpaced revenues by seven point nine million dollars. My call to action for the city of Bellevue or the citizens of Bellevue, be an active citizen. Go vote on May fourteenth. That's when that half-cent sales tax is going to be there. Whether you vote for it or against it, just vote. That's all I ask. Call your council members. Hope y'all get your phones, you know, calling all the time now. I want you to call them and tell them what you think. Attend as many council and school board meetings so we can take back our city and our, in our education process. And then sign the Epic Option Petition. To the council, I'm requesting that you reduce the mill levy to point four one. I would like for you to reduce expenditures in the 2024, 2025 budget by thirty-five percent. Do not request more than the threshold allows in L B six forty-four. And then my last question is, when is this obscene and oppressive taxation of we, the people, of the citizens of Bellevue, yes, we are citizens, Mr. Cook, going to stop? Thank you very much.
Thanks for speaking, and there's a couple of things that I do want to clear up, which I think is misinformation. We did not vote to put the five percent on, on sales right now. We voted to put that on the ballot for the people to choose, and there's, there's a reason for that, and that'll be explained in the coming weeks. The threw a lot of different numbers out here, and I'm going to have Rich come up and explain. I know it looks like our financial status, he said, was seven point nine million to the bad.
Rich Seversen, Finance Director, yeah, there were a lot of numbers thrown out there. And let me first just mention that with the bonds, we did just receive another rating from S and P, and they gave us another double A-plus rating with a stable outlook for the water extension bonds, the up to twelve and a half million. And I might just mention that I pared that back to eleven million. I think that will be sufficient. But it also contemplates and talks about a little bit of the sixty million. So S and P still believes that we have a very high credit rating, and since they talked about the prospective issue of the sixty million, I expect it to remain double A-plus through that, those issues also. With regard to the other items, I did have a little presentation just to talk about why we would look like we have a deficit spending year over year. And I don't know if, it's six slides. Do you want me to?
Sure, please.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure if this'll answer everything, but as far as budgets, number one, government is not a for-profit entity, so you don't go in every year trying to make a profit. There are certain activities where you want to cover that cost and maybe build up some reserves to take care of future repair, maintenance, that type of thing. But also Nebraska, municipality budgets are guided by statute, and Bellevue's no different. There's a Budget Act. It talks a little bit about cash reserves, and this cash reserve shall not exceed fifty percent of the total budget. Now, in the budget process, Bellevue, we do a pretty good job of estimating the revenues, and those revenues generally come in within five to eight percent year, year over year to the budget. Because like I say here, sales taxes, occupation taxes, and fees are pretty consistent, property taxes. Well, you levy them, just try not paying them, right? So but sometimes it's the expenditure side that is a little more challenging. We go through it and we try to estimate and put down what we believe, well, what you believe the city needs for continued improvement, new infrastructure, park improvements, street improvements, all of those things. And what happened was, 2021, we couldn't find the vendors and the contractors to do the work, and so the revenue came in, but the expenditures came in short and grew an eighteen million dollar surplus. So there's kind of what happened the last couple of years, and so going back to thirteen five oh four, we can't hoard rev, cash. That's not why government's here, or is not why it should be here, is you collect enough to pay the estimated expenditures that you, you have in that budget. And sometimes it, there's, there's a variance, but what we were doing, looking at just each year separately, and I think in my attempt to try to make that one-page summary in the admin report easier to read and easier to track for somebody that's knowledgeable and kind of informed and watching it, maybe, maybe I overdid it and it could be misinterpreted by just looking at that bottom line. But the reason is, we consciously went back and we're trying to spend down some of that cash reserve, because our job is not to just keep it in the bank. It's to use it for the betterment of the community. So, so anyway, this kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of why we keep budgeting for some of those cash reserves. And it's not always easy, because although if we just said, what do you want? We'd get a lot of responses. We do go through some vetting with the budget committee and others saying no, or saying, is this absolutely necessary? So it's not like you just go in and you budget another eighteen million. What do you want to spend it on? Find something. It's, it's really thoughtful, and the people are justifying why they need to do it. And this is just another way of showing those, you know, the, we budgeted, what, two million? We came in seventeen point eight million. Then we budgeted four million, and we actually just spent a little bit, so we're three point six million plus, and then the next year, two point five million plus. We also manage those expenses, and it's, it's so that we will be able to cover costs year over year and in the future. So having some cash reserve is good, but again, we got to watch the statute, and we got to make sure that we're not overdoing it. So anyway, that's, hopefully that explains a little bit why it looks like sometimes that we're budgeting a deficit and, and standalone, it might not look so good. But I think we generally do a pretty good job of, of that. So anyway.
Yep. I'm not questioning you. You do a great job, so appreciate the explanation.
Any other?
Any questions?
Questions?
Rich? Okay, thanks, Rich.
All right.
I'm gonna have Jim touch just on the, specifically on the amended agenda.
So it's implied that we adjusted the agenda hours before the council meeting. We have a twenty-four hour requirement to have our, our agenda complete. The bonds were both on there twenty-four hours in advance. The, the two attachments that were on with the bonds were out of, out of sequence. So Shirley adjusted it, put them back in sequence, if it's the easiest way to say it, and just put it back out. So nothing was amended or changed from prior to that twenty-four hours. So it was strictly just a procedural thing to clean up an attachment that was out of order. So within that twenty-four hour rules meant, well, within that, so, so Shirley, do you?
Yeah, just to echo on that, that was amended twenty-four hours and sent out to the council members and posted on our website. The way our software system is set up, anytime I make a modification, it'll timestamp it, so it looked like it was amended Tuesday. However, it was not. I threw, I, when I scanned the attachments, I didn't realize there was a couple sheets in there that were double-sided. A council member caught it, alerted me, and so I had to re-scan the attachments. But it was, it was amended within the twenty-four hour timeframe.
Okay, just a few more items that I want to cover, and there might be some council members who want to jump in, but the half percent, it said the half percent sales tax was to fund the ballpark. Another misinformation. The half percent sales tax has nothing to do with the ballpark. The water park, I'm sorry. So the water park is paid by usage tax, which is going to be covered by the Trans, Good Life Transformational Act. So the state gives back, and even if it didn't give back, we were originally planning on covering it with a usage tax. It just so happens, the Good Life Transformational Act came into play, and we're going to utilize that. So that two point seven five that the state takes away from the sales tax is added back as a two point seven five usage tax. That's what pays for the ballpark. Half percent sales tax, or the water park, sorry. Half percent sales tax has nothing to do with funding the water park. Now, if the council in the future wants to accelerate bonds, if we have a little extra sales tax that's coming in off that entertainment area, off that half percent, maybe you guys want to elect to accelerate paying those bonds? I mean, I'm not going to say it's never going to be used for it, but it definitely has nothing to do with the water park like it was stated. The bonding, so we're talking about all these big numbers, but things we don't talk about, when we bond for the water, the MED water coming to the area. We bonded to cover the whole amount, but we have, Harrison, what was the last grant we received?
It was inland port authorities, two million dollars.
Two million dollars for the inland port authority, and then we're still waiting on another bond from?
Correct. We, we submitted a grant application for the E D A last week, a week and a half ago, and so July, we should know if it, by July, if we get another five million dollars.
So that's seven million dollars that comes off that bond. It gives us the authorization to move forward with our projects, but we're, we're going out after money. Congressman Flood just notified us yesterday, we're getting one point seven two nine million dollars towards the library. So that's one point seven two nine that goes right back to the citizens that we don't have to use. So that's one point seven two nine that goes right back to the citizens, um, that, that we don't have to use. Uh, our water, our, our pumping station over the Missouri River, uh, you got two hundred thousand for that. So a lot of these numbers, um, we're authorized to spend that, but we're working hard for the taxpayers to save you money. And, and get the, the best bang for the buck that we can, so. Um, and these, the statement that, that, uh, we don't think our citizens are qualified, that, nothing to do with it. I think all our conversation was, there was a couple people in the audience. If, if we pick two people from the citizen, these people up here are picked by the citizens from the whole city. So about ten thousand people per ward roughly are picking your representatives here. How do we pick out a citizen from the public without going through an election process that they want? That person representing them to be on our budget committee. Um, that makes no sense to me and it, it seems very hard. So again, that's, that's not, that's not accurate information. So I would ask the citizens. Yeah, study, study what we're doing up here as a council. Uh, we're representing you very well, I think, in the public. And we're doing what's best for the city and we're going to, uh, keep marching towards that vision. That, uh, that takes the burden off our residents, uh, for, for property taxes and puts it on a user tax. And, uh, out, we're bringing outside money and increasing that tax base with, with attracting manufacturers and, and places like that here. So, um, I, I res- I respect your speeches, but I, I totally disagree with a lot of it. Um, and if there's any council members that would like to add to that. Sure do that. Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rich, don't we also have, because of being a public entity, there are checks and balances that have to happen? We have statewide auditors that come in and, and the, the bond people wouldn't grant us a bond. If they thought we were in too deep or not bringing in enough revenues.
Well, no one, no one would buy the bonds.
Okay, and so they bonded in order to be able to, to sell those bonds, but they wouldn't even issue those. If they felt we were a high-risk community, correct?
Um, I don't know, the vendors still might try to issue them, but they would come out with a very high interest rate, uh, in order to sell them. Or, you know, there'd be resistance in selling them. And I'm sure that our, um, uh, like DA Davidson and the bond counsel would come back and say, this might not be a good time. Or that, you know, let's go back and take a look. I think, uh, although they can't really do a lot of advising, uh, on exactly what we do. I think that, uh, it would be clear that, uh, if, uh, if we weren't doing pretty much the right things. Uh, those bonds wouldn't be accepted out there.
Well, and DA Davidson at our meeting, all, uh, cause I asked him, what was the ratio? Because as a consumer, if you're buying a house, they look at your debt to income ratio. And they said, we were at single digits, I think, two to three percent of the debt. And some cities are at ten to fifteen percent. So we are way low in comparison to that. Plus, there are so many statutes, ordinances, regulations in place that if we were doing something unethical, immoral. Against the law.
There's nothing unethical.
I, I'm not saying there is, but what I'm saying is we would be challenged. There would be somebody coming in to, um, to, uh, make us get back into the regulation. And we don't have those types of people that come to our places. They're checking to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing the trees, t's and talking about what a great job you and this administration have done, correct?
Sure.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'll answer for you. I just want to remind the public too, that, uh, uh, through Rich's leadership and the administration of budget committees. Uh, we have had the lowest average bond rating in the country at one point nine six, the average. You gonna correct me?
True interest cost.
True interest cost.
True interest cost, yeah.
Yep, so, uh, kudos. Councilman Cook.
I, right, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a quick comment. There was talk about the task force, now we call it a budget committee. I think everybody up here, except, uh, Mr. Casey, has served on the budget committee. Um, there's three of us that are on it. It'd be a lot easier, I shouldn't say easier, it'd be a lot different if just one was there. But three of us are there because we can't have a quorum of four. So we, we go to these meetings, which are several meetings, and we're asking questions. We're trying to understand, a lot of stuff is removed and we come with a budget. So I, I, I just don't want people to think that we just show up here and we're gonna vote yes for everything. There's a lot of meetings, there's a lot of discussions. We get material sent from the finance department to us to review almost weekly, but for surely every meeting. Um, I, I, I'm telling you, you got a lot of people up here that are. We just don't show up the first and third Tuesday of the month to go through an agenda real quick and so we can go home. There's a lot of time and effort. And again, you, you elect us up here and, and to wait. If, if we gotta bring everybody in the community up and everything that we do, we're not gonna get nothing done. You put us here, I hope you trust us. I've never seen anything that I thought was unethical or wrong of, and I'm going in my twelfth year. So I, I think we're doing a good job. I think we've got great leadership. We got great directors. I think the city of Bellevue is in great shape and I, I, I think the citizens realize that. And, and I hope we can continue to go in the, a good, uh, forward movement. Thank you.
Just gonna add one more, just saw this note, um, over overwhelming opposition against our tax increase. At the public meeting, that, um, I want to remind everybody again, there's sixty-six thousand people in this city right now. There was two hundred people at that meeting. So you can call it overwhelming opposition, but again, back to what we're talking about. You elect us to represent you, we are representing the sixty-six thousand people in the city, so. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask?
No.
I didn't think so.
Thank you. All right, number ten, liquor licenses. Ten A recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. For an application of a class C liquor license to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits on and off sale for Happy Buddhas LLC. Doing business as Happy Buddhas Asian Cuisine located at three eight zero eight. Twin Creek Drive Suite one oh seven, Bellevue, Nebraska. And John Stevens as manager. And looks like John is in the audience, so if you want to come up and say a few words about Happy Buddhas, that'd be great. But I'm gonna open the public hearing at the same time, so if there's anybody that followed John and wants to talk about it, please come up after, after John. But the public hearing is open.
We love John at the restaurant, Jacob Betsworth, but, uh, no, it's okay.
Messing everything up.
No, that's okay. I don't have much to say other than just a small establishment. Obviously, food is right now a hundred percent of our, our sales. And if this is approved, it'll be, still be ninety percent of our sales. Our intention is to have a few small bottled, uh, beers, a couple mixed drinks. We're open at eleven in the morning until nine at night, so we close at nine o'clock at night. Uh, every day we're open, uh, only close on Mondays, so.
Okay. Food's great, I've been there, so.
Yeah, I see a few faces here that have been through, so.
All right, well, thanks for coming out.
Bet.
Anybody else want to speak? Any questions for Jacob? Well, he's here. Nope, all right, seeing nobody else coming forward, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion on ten A? Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was there about a week ago, excellent food, excellent service, excellent place, and I wish you nothing but the best of luck. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. For the, an application of a class C liquor license to sell beer, wine and dis- distilled spirits on and off sale. For Happy Buddhas LLC, doing business as Happy Buddhas.
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 Asian Cuisine located at thirty-eight zero eight, Twin Creek Drive Suite one oh seven, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one two three. And John Stevens as manager.
We were there a couple weeks ago and I will second that motion.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
You're good. Thanks, Jacob, for coming out. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four one four six. Request to amend ordinance number four one zero four. City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding minor text amendments for the purpose of updating staff titles. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one four six. An ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. To adopt the zoning regulations and official zoning map for the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. To provide for the repeal of ordinances inconsistent herewith. And to provide when this ordinance shall be in a full effect, full force and effect.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number four one four six.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance number four one four seven. Request to amend the city of Bellevue subdivision regulations regarding minor text amendments for the purpose of updating staff titles. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one four seven. An ordinance to amend ordinance number four one zero five subdivision ordinance. By changing staff titles and adopting definitions for such. To repeal such ordinance as heretofore existing and to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve agenda eleven B.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A. Ordinance number four one five one, request to rezone lots one through one sixteen and lots A through E. Cornhusker Creek being a platting of tax lot thirty A one, located in the southeast quarter of section twenty. Township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska, from RS seventy-two to RD sixty dash PS, RG fifty dash PS, RG twenty dash PS. MU and BG for the purpose of residential and commercial development with site plan approval and preliminary. Plat lots one through one sixteen and outlots A through E, Cornhusker Creek. Applicant Cornhusker Creek LLC, general location northwest corner of South Thirty-Sixth Street and Cornhusker Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one five one. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska. As provided for by article three of ordinance number four one zero four. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about South Thirty-Sixth Street and Cornhusker Road. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six PM here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, we have none this evening. Fifteen resolutions, we have none this evening. Sixteen, current business, sixteen A authorize the purchase of a Scorpion two crash trailer. At, at, attenuator. Is that right?
Yep.
For the street department in amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen A, second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Alfred Benish and Company. For the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five resurfacing project. In an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional engineering services agreement. With Jacob's Engineering Group, Inc. for drainage improvements in an amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to the original agreement with. Folsberg, Holt and Ulevig for traffic signal improvements in an amount not to exceed four thousand two hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order number four to the right-of-way mowing. Two zero two two contract with Crow Lawn Care LLC in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, thirty-six dollars and seventeen cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the change order number one to the right-of-way Parks Mowing. Two thousand twenty-two contract with Alexander Lawn and Landscape in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. February report is attached to meeting packet. Are there any questions on those reports? Okay, we'll file those and there is no closed session, so I need a motion to adjourn, please. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any com- comments or questions on that one? Please vote.
No, I was on the wrong item. We'll just do a roll call vote. Casey?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Yes. Cherry? Preister?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Drive carefully.